Good evening and welcome. Tonight is the first of two nights that we have set aside to hear from the community on the superintendent's fiscal year 2022 operating budget proposal to the Board of Education. In light of the ongoing pandemic, this hearing and all testimonies will be conducted virtually this year. Tonight's hearing will be broadcast live on television and MCPS media. As always, board members are looking forward to hearing and giving thoughtful consideration to your input as we prepare to review and take action on the superintendent's recommendations. Before we begin, let me allow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Ms. Silvestri.
Evening, everyone. Carla Silvestri, School Board Member at Large.
Ms. O'Neil.
Good evening. Pat O'Neil, District Three.
Dr. Daka.
Judy Daka, District One.
Mrs. Swandrowski.
Sorry. Good evening. Rebecca Swandrowski, District Two.
Ms. Evans.
Good evening. Shebra Evans, District Four.
Ms. Harris.
Hello, everyone. Lynn Harris, at Large.
Mr. Asante.
Good evening. Nick Asante, Assistant Member of the Board.
And I'm Brenda Wolf, President, District Five. Thank you. I'm going to ask the MCPS staff to please introduce yourselves, starting with our superintendent, Dr. Smith.
Good evening. Jack Smith, Superintendent, Dr. McKnight.
Good evening, everyone. Monique McKnight, Deputy Superintendent. Good to be here this evening.
Hi, I'm Karen Strattman, Chief of Staff at MCPS.
Good evening. I'm Derek Turner, Chief of Engagement, Innovation, and Operations.
Good evening. This is Dan Morello, Associate Superintendent for Finance, MCPS.
Hello, this is Essie McGuire, Associate Superintendent of Operations, MCPS.
Do we have any more? Okay, well, thank you. The order of speakers is listed on the agenda that is available on the Board's website. Board members will have the opportunity to hear from the community via either written, audio, or video presentations. Only the audio and video testimonies received will be aired during this meeting. Written testimony of those who signed up for tonight's hearing has been made available to the public on Board Docs. The Board's second night set aside for a hearing on the proposed operating budget is Tuesday, January the 19th at 6:00 PM. The Board's work sessions on the operating budget request will be held beginning at 10:00 AM on Thursday, January the 14th, on Thursday, January the 21st, and on Monday, January the 25th. We will take tentative action on the proposed operating budget on Monday, February the 23rd during the Board's regularly scheduled meeting. So let's begin. Our first speaker is Violet Fisher for the Rockville Cluster.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendents. I'm Violet Fisher, a sixth grade student at Wood Middle School, submitting this testimony on behalf of the Rockville High School Cluster regarding the proposed operating budget. It's important in these rough times that students get the help they need to succeed. But keep in your mind that not all students have access to that. The adoption of this budget could provide that. What do we need? Let's think about our ABCs. A, A is for allocations. Mental health staffing allocations must be addressed with urgency. The MCPS ratios are far from nationally recommended numbers. Special education staff must be able to focus on providing services to students. From elementary schools supporting students in the SESES program to high school educating students in a DHOH program. Students with special needs in the Rockville Cluster, like special education students all over the county, need as much direct access to educators as possible. Are there any educators who went into this profession so that they could spend all day and night filling out paperwork? Just saying. For all other areas, free staffing allocations at the current levels instead of just adjusting them by the current enrollments, which are misleading given the impact of COVID-19. B, B is for building staff skills with professional development. If cultural competency, social emotional learning, and restorative justice are priorities, then staff training must be required. Please fund the budget request for required professional development and expand the budget when you can. The children are depending on you. No pressure, though. C, C is for creative solutions. A couple of creative solutions for Black, Brown, and low-income students. One, community schools. No matter what happens with the current funding, please continue to work on community schools and expand the community school model to secondary schools, even if funding only allows for a small expansion next year. You can use a research-based approach that is already proven to work around the country as driven by the collective knowledge and efforts of families, students, staff, and community partners, and provide schools with unique programming and services particular to that community's needs. Talk about a win-win, am I right? Two, pilot ideas. The tight budget is going to mean you can't do too many creative things, and you can't do them everywhere. Why not pilot solutions in different schools to do the most you can with what you have? Creative solutions for all. Outdoor learning options. We can start planning now on how to set up outdoor learning spaces on school grounds in summer and fall. They don't have to be used for entire classes, for entire days, but they could be options for schools to bring a group outside as much as possible to breathe in that nice, fresh air. We've been training for 10 months on how to hang outside while social distancing with masks on. We can do this, people. How will we get it? It's as easy as one, two, three. One, call for enrollment amnesty. Partner with the County Council to work with our state delegation to make sure next year's funding formula is not based on this year's enrollment. We must consider the impact that the pandemic has had and prepare for a bump back up in enrollment once we reopen school buildings. Two, access rainy day funds. If this isn't a rainy day, I don't know what is. The School Board, the County Council, and the State must all dig into their rainy day funds and help shoulder the burden. The only solution cannot be to cut and restrict. Now's the time for more nurturing and care for students and staff. Three, be courageous and ask for what the school system needs. I know you get pressured to temper your budget requests, but I'm counting on you to ask for the funds my fellow students need. You got this. We have your back. In closing, I want to give a shout out to the Wood Middle School staff, especially my teachers who are helping me become a better student. Make a decision that feels right to your heart. Stay happy and healthy. Bye.
Next, we'll have Lauren Berkowitz from the Churchill Cluster.
Greetings, Board of Education, Dr. Smith, Dr. McKnight, and the MCPS staff. My name is Lauren Berkowitz, and I am one of the Winston Churchill Cluster Coordinators. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening on the FY22 operating budget on behalf of the Winston Churchill Cluster. I am so grateful for all of the work that the Board, the MCPS Central Office, Administration, and Staff have put in for our students during the pandemic. We concur with many of Dr. Smith's asks for the FY22 budget. We ask that you support schools with sufficient numbers of staff members who will be needed to give the best education to all MCPS students. This includes all types of MCPS staff that work within the school buildings. Despite the drop in enrollment this year, please find schools in line with the projected level in a typical year because many students are expected to return to school once the COVID-19 crisis concludes. The COVID-19 crisis has left many of our students with educational gaps, and we will need additional teachers and paraeducators to support these efforts. Further, we ask that there be an increase in psychologists at schools with the goal of a full-time psychologist at every school as part of the FY22 budget. Many students are experiencing increased mental health crises as a result of trauma of the pandemic in our cluster and countywide. We also ask for additional teacher and staff support for students so that they are prepared to proceed to the next grade level in the fall or to participate in SAT and AP exams in the spring. As we know, the reduced number of educational hours has left gaps, and the need, we need to address these gaps with urgency. Also, we ask the school system to support enrichment programs since there has been less room in the shortened curriculum hours to stimulate the curiosity of all students. These are countywide asks for all of our students. For students with IEP and special needs, we need more robust interventions that will assist with both in-person and virtual learning. This is especially important with virtual learning, and we always need to have adequate supports. Many parents are very concerned that students are not receiving the services that they should during the pandemic, which makes the virtual learning even more difficult. Finally, we continue to hear some concerns about the need for laptops for staff and for more stable internet. Specific to the Chinese immersion program at Potomac Elementary School, we will need more support with staffing. At the high school level at Churchill, we would like to see additional counselors on staff. The pandemic makes the college application process more challenging for students. The counselors need to spend more time with the students. Additionally, increased mental health issues due to the trauma of the pandemic lead to the need for more psychologists and social workers. These providers can also be of assistance with any problems that occur at the school that are outside of the regular education curriculum. This, too, is probably a countywide ask. Thank you again for your help and support during the pandemic. We know this is an unprecedented challenge, and we are grateful for you. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Amy Ackerberg-Hastings from the Richard Montgomery Cluster.
Good evening, President Wolf and the Board of Education, Dr. Smith and MCPS staff. My name is Amy Ackerberg-Hastings, and I serve MCCPTA as one of the Richard Montgomery Cluster Coordinators. We continue to be so proud of how our teachers, administration, and staff are stepping up and thinking creatively to track down and engage each student. I will mention just a couple of the good things I have heard. Over 87% of Julius West Middle School students completed MAPM in the first week of testing. The Cluster schools are maintaining productive relationships with their PTAs, including partnering on staff appreciation, providing parents with resources for mental and digital health at Richard Montgomery High School, and distributing 215 Thanksgiving meals and 240 holiday breakfast boxes at Julius West. I'd also like to note that the Twinbrook Elementary PTA raised 2/3 of its usual goal by creating a virtual version of its annual fun run for field trips. And we are so grateful for the five meal distribution sites in our cluster, as well as the produce boxes frequently available at some schools. As these praises suggest, our cluster has a great willingness to work together and serve our community, but there are also great needs in our community that need to be served. Meanwhile, as you know, throughout all of MCPS, there is great uncertainty about how many students we will have when the school's reopened in full, how many will be in poverty, and how many will require special education, ESOL, and other services. Therefore, we join the Richard Montgomery Cluster Principals to request that staffing allocations be frozen for at least fiscal year 2022, but ideally until enrollment numbers stabilize. In particular, from our point of view, special education and ESOL staffing allocations should be maintained at the pre-pandemic level that was based on the enrollment numbers released in February 2020. During remote learning, it has been very difficult to identify and assess students who need these services. This does not mean that there is less of a need for these vital supports. Please protect students, families, and schools from being impacted further by these unintended consequences of the remote learning experience by maintaining staffing levels for special education, ESOL, staff development, reading initiative, and focused teachers and staff for the next one to two years. This gives schools time to locate and figure out habits to support the needs of students. Also, Title I federal funding for schools, as you know, is determined by the number of students who qualify for free or reduced-priced meals. Most MCPS schools, and especially the most impacted schools, saw a slight to moderate drop in their overall farms rate due to the challenges parents face in applying online. It was also not necessary for families to apply for support this year, since thankfully the federal government is providing meals to any family with no requirement to show economic need. Moving forward, this could mean that even if a school retains its Title I status, its funding would be decreased due to the lower percentage of families who completed the forms. Thus, we request that MCPS adjust the formula for per pupil allocation of federal funding to a level that keeps this funding stable for Title I schools, so they do not lose critical staff members as a result of COVID-19 and distance learning. Additionally, we would like to remind the Board of ongoing maintenance and physical plant needs. First, the installation of a fence around the perimeter of the nearly new turf fields at Julius West Middle School to alleviate the problem that users without permits are accessing the fields. Second, additional handwashing stations near cafeterias or outdoor access points as appropriate for the layouts of individual buildings. Third, filtered water fountains configured for refillable water bottles on each floor of each school. And fourth, completion of the MCPS-wide review of HVAC systems for exchange rates compliant with ASHRAI COVID-19 recommendations, as well as follow-up on repairs at College Gardens Elementary and Richard Montgomery High School to make sure the fixes were effective and systems will work correctly when students and staff return. Thank you for your attention. I wish you the best in managing vegetarian challenges and making decisions about reopening in these tough times.
Okay, next, we'll have Kristin Erdheim from McGruder Cluster.
Dr. Smith and members of the Board, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Kristin Erdheim, and I represent the McGruder Cluster along with Deidre Apple and Kimberly Glassman. After months of virtual learning, it is now clear that this pandemic has wiped out academic gains for many of our students and has widened racial and economic gaps across the county as well as our country. Our cluster strongly believes that the main focus of the operating budget should be to prioritize the recovery necessary to address the social, emotional, and academic losses brought on by the virtual learning environment. We also want to ensure that all MCPS schools are able to operate safely and effectively in the wake of the pandemic. Our testimony focuses on these recovery efforts and related issues that we believe will be most important as part of an eventual return to in-person instruction. We would like to request KN95s to be available for all administration, teachers, and support staff that are currently working in or will be working in the buildings with students. Upgraded PPE could allow them to continue working in person, even if there is an exposure in their building. We appreciate how challenging it has been to teach and learn online. We recognize that our students will return to school with gaps in skills and knowledge as well as lost opportunities for progress, and many having struggled during this time of online learning. We request the necessary staffing throughout the cluster to provide our students with the academic and emotional support we know they will need once a return to in-person instruction occurs, especially in our schools that have learning centers and larger percentages of farm students and English language learners. At the elementary school level, we think that small groups should be implemented to address the learning gaps that have increased over the past 10 months. In addition, we anticipate the academic needs of our English language learners to be even greater once we return to in-person instruction, and therefore request more ESOL teachers throughout the schools in our cluster. To further support the academic and emotional well-being of our English language learners, we also respectfully request more ESOL counselors. The pandemic has taken a huge toll on the mental health of our students and staff. Children already coping with mental health conditions have been especially vulnerable to the changes, and now we are learning about the broad impacts on students as a result of schools being closed, physically distancing guidelines and isolation, and other unexpected changes to their lives. Taking steps to support students is essential during this challenging time, whether they're learning remotely or in classrooms. We know that mindfulness programs have been integrated into the virtual learning schedule for all grades, but know their participation in these programs is often very low, mainly at the high school level. We realize that conducting emotional check-ins are more difficult to do when students aren't physically in the building, and request that MCPS focus on maintaining and strengthening connections among students and their peers in support of adults. It would be helpful to implement systematic screenings, provide telehealth counseling services, and set up phone buddy networks among students to identify those who might need extra support during this challenging time. Due to the decreased instructional time in the virtual learning environment, the coverage of the curriculum has been limited. Even though teachers are doing the best they can to teach as much as possible in the limited time they have on screen with students, we are requesting a robust summer program to help students recoup time and instruction they lost during the pandemic. In addition to academic programming over the summer, it will be critically important for kids to have an opportunity to reconnect and have fun. Combining robust summer programming with enrichment and traditional summer activities can provide students with the opportunities they need both academically and emotionally. Whether we are in the buildings or remain virtual, we request funding for after-school programs, which could involve help with homework, enrichment, and social opportunities. Our students are suffering academically as well as socially, and we need to provide opportunities for them outside of school hours. The quality of instruction continues to be a concern to us, mainly at the high school level, but also throughout our entire cluster. At the high school level, the AP scores at McGruder continue to be quite low, and we know the grades students receive in their class and their AP test scores do not align very well. This is likely to be exacerbated this year due to the virtual learning and the inability to cover the entire AP curriculum with significantly less hours in the virtual classroom than would have been in the actual classroom. It is evident that the curriculum being taught is not aligning with the College Board curriculum as it should be. We've also seen a lack of consistency across the county regarding the types of AP teaching materials and resources being provided to students. There needs to be a better way to assess the AP teachers and quality of AP resources if the students are continuing to do well in class but not on the AP exam. Thank you for your time. The McGruder Cluster looks forward to working with you all and building a stronger future for our students. We hope we can continue to make improvements and see these funds, but to good use in the coming year.
Next, we'll hear from Jane Lehrman-Poolsville Cluster.
President Wolf, Dr. Smith, Dr. McKnight, members of the Board, and MCPS leadership, my name is Jane Lehrman, and I represent the small but mighty Poolsville Cluster. We are Monocacy Elementary, John Poole Middle, Poolsville Elementary, and Poolsville High Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to present the concerns of our cluster during these uniquely challenging times. The multiple crises that we face will not be addressed by the usual tools that we have used during previous economic downturns. In fact, when Mrs. O'Neil met with MCCPTA last week, she was very transparent in her concerns about how we will fund our schools for the next few years. I'd like to thank Mrs. O'Neil for her very honest assessment of the situation and the sage advice for these proceedings. First, please note that Poolsville Cluster schools have increasing enrollments, albeit smaller than the rest of the county. That said, I request that you do no harm as you allocate resources. In that spirit, please note that all Poolsville schools need to maintain current staffing levels to accommodate the growth that is happening in our cluster. We also support the implementation of outdoor classrooms that perfectly align with the offerings of our schools. John Poole Middle already has an outdoor classroom, and Poolsville High School has a well-established magnet program based largely on outdoor education. We encourage you to use our cluster schools as prototypes for outdoor classrooms that can be built throughout the county. Poolsville Cluster also requests that additional special education resources be allocated to our schools, as some of our students will need to be remediated in the aftermath of distance learning. Finally, we request the maintenance of our out-of-cluster magnet bus routes. I would also like to recommend working directly with the Department of Transportation to ensure that the number 76 bus route to Poolsville be maintained, if not expanded, to accommodate our students who have convenient access to ride-on service. This has been an extraordinarily difficult year, and we appreciate all of the work you have done for our students and teachers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Poolsville Cluster. This concludes my testimony.
And next, we'll have Sharice Scott. She's speaking on behalf of the Paint Ranch, Blake, and Springbrook Clusters.
Greetings, everyone, respected members of the Board, Superintendent Jack Smith, and all of the community members and community partners that will receive this message. My name is Sharice Scott. I am here today representing the Northeast Consortium of Schools that include the elementary, middle, and high schools in the Blake Paint Ranch and Springbrook Clusters. I thank you for the opportunity to represent you, and I thank you all for receiving this testimony today. We have seen our next generation of young people begin to take initiative to rise up and address some of today's problems, as well as the inequities that come with the solutions to many of those problems. We've also seen our next generation of young people suffer from some of today's problems. Some of them overcome successfully, while others with loss of life, loss of hope, lack of support, lack of guidance, lack of options, and a lack of the full understanding of life, history, and their powerful ability to shape it for themselves. We acknowledge and expect that the proposed operating budget will address this lack. Perspective on how to approach a budget is often contingent on its anticipated outcome or the expectation set by the final decision and its measurable results. But let's be honest, when looking at an operating budget and the anticipated outcome or measurable results in an environment such as the one we're living in today, that may not be a reasonable goal to set. What we can set as a reasonable and measurable result, though, are the ways in which we go about setting forth the allocations of the budget based on its intended outcome. Here's an example. We can look at this budget and see clearly the intent to resolve an issue where there were too few paraeducators in the system, as well as a need for additional support in areas of special education. However, what we cannot see in the budget is where those resources will be placed and how the decision to place those resources will be made. Those of us who understand this testimony process and have been engaged in it for some time now recognize this as part of the process, which some of those decisions may be influenced. However, there are many people who do not know or understand this process. As I'm representing the Northeast Consortium of Schools in this testimony today, I can say confidently, on behalf of our school communities, thank you. Thank you for acknowledging this major issue as it has been presented over the years, and thank you for addressing it in this budget. We support the increase in this line item, and we look forward to the details of how the allocations will be set forth to positively impact our school communities, as well as others that have a similar need. This endorsement is based on the perspective of our Northeast Consortium school communities. Other communities that don't have this issue might not find the numbers presented valid in the grand scheme of this budget. Now, in applying the allocation of this line item and determining how the resources will be distributed, the question respectfully becomes, was your perspective when crafting this budget looking at the needs of yesterday when the request was made, today where the need may or may not have increased, or tomorrow where the need might be even greater, depending upon the direction our school system takes to recover from the loss of academic time during this pandemic? I think you get the drift. I'm pretty sure if you were to answer that question today, you might say all of the above. However, there is a certain degree of transparency and accountability that our school communities are looking for in terms of how the school budget is presented and how decisions are being made to support the true needs of our schools today and tomorrow. We need that to be addressed so that we can effectively advocate and ensure that your staff has all of the details needed to make super-informed decisions as we prepare this next generation of leaders to run a new world. There's new math, new money, new agriculture, there are new dictionaries, new language, new science, and new history being made every day. Who is writing that curriculum? And how is it being programmed and applied for today's learners to be prepared for their very near future? Budgeting for the evolution of education is no easy task, and it should not be taken for granted how the budget is presented, the questions that are asked of it, and the external support of the family and community partners who want nothing more. external support of the family and community partners who want nothing more than to be there to help supplement where the school system cannot address what's needed to support our collective future that is ultimately driven by the growth and development of our young people and their evolution. We are thankful to the MCPS staff and leadership that were available to join the MCCPTA Operating Budget Workshop earlier this week. As a result of that collaboration, there was a lot of clarity brought forth on the intention of the spend of this proposed operating budget. With that, our community in the Northeast Consortium to include Blake Paint Branch and Springbrook Cluster Schools asked the following. We'd like more detail on how the staffing allocations will support the recovery of learning loss through accelerated learning, extended day, weekend, or summer courses with no associated fee to families. Will this be addressed per school or in a cluster or area collective sort of environment, similar to the George P. Thomas Saturday School setup? Will the opportunity for small group teacher-student engagement exist for our middle and high school learners to engage and excel, as many elementary schools are developing small breakout groups for reading and phonics? We're looking for detail on tangible materials for students. Where specialized high school coursework may require one level of material access, we'd like to know how the funds will be applied to support our younger learners and our middle schoolers with their hands-on application and accountability. We're looking for detail on how the budget will address the socialization of students in the curriculum, whether it includes safe outdoor space for traditional learning or safe outdoor space to facilitate specials like art, PE, music, and even SEL that could be done at a distance in an outdoor school environment, potentially offering a fun and intermittent opportunity for students to see each other once or twice a week to get some outdoor instruction on the off days. The flexibility of options needs to be reflected tangibly in the budget. We would like to see the Office of Family Support work with the school PTAs to engage the most vulnerable families and all families in a way that pulls the community together to create harbors for support beyond the school's control. This will help create a balance of accountability and encourage neighbors and students to assist each other where the need truly exists, possibly establishing peer group support opportunities, cohorts to grow an environment together instead of a park behind their black Zoom screens. With that, we are looking for fair allocation of school psychologists, pupil personnel workers, and counselors, whose hours should be reflective of the need within the schools they service, allowing them to pay more attention and fully service their assigned schools. Much like paraeducators, the pupil personnel worker, or PPWs as you might hear them called, are overutilized but under-resourced in the budget. They are spread thin between their schools, and their needs to be more of them to address the dynamics of what each student and their families are experiencing. This will help them to effectively identify the best referral resources and options where the scope is beyond what they can do. This is a key resource in our Northeast Consortium communities, and we need to make sure there's sufficient funding and allocation there. Should the students return to school, we'd like to see in the budget enhanced protocol education or materials that support the proper use and enforcement of personal protective equipment, both on the school bus and in the school buildings, so that it becomes second nature to the students, especially the youngest learners. Who will be the dedicated enforcer of this behavior in the schools? For safety reasons, there should be some dedicated resource or protocol to help implement the safe use of these materials into the school culture and the daily curriculum. We appreciate the time and care being put into the facilitation of how the air will be handled and filtered through the most updated HVAC systems in all of our schools. That is a measurable allocation that we'll look forward to seeing implemented across the board to ensure the environmental safety of all who enter the school buildings. We're asking for a timeline on the anticipated implementation of the air filtration systems, as well as the school's water treatment and installation of hydration systems in all of our schools prior to normalized return to the buildings. Understanding this proposed budget is presented as a same services budget to move the work forward, we are cautiously optimistic that it will, in fact, be what is required to ensure a progressive approach in addressing the regression many students may be experiencing at this time, not only academically, but also socially, emotionally, and financially, to ensure they are properly positioned to be receptive to the academic rigor they're being presented that will help prepare them for a future where they can become self-sufficient, self-confident, and self-motivated to be the best version of themselves today, making a greater impact tomorrow that will be relevant for the future, no matter who's watching them. Thank you for your time and consideration and for your selfless commitment to our youth. Specific school requests have been presented in the text version of this testimony. Again, my name is Sharice Scott. I'm here today representing the Northeast Consortium of Schools, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, at this time, we'll take board questions. I'm just gonna go around, that might be easier. I'm gonna start with Dr. Daca.
I just had a question, and I don't know whether we can answer it here, but Violet talked about community schools, and I just need to know what she means by that.
Dr. Doc, I think I can help with that. There are many different definitions of community schools and many different models. And one of the things that we proposed back on December 3rd and in the digital budget presentation on December 18th is that we look at a set of our highest poverty schools, and we bring a group of MCPS staff and stakeholders together with community members and develop a model where we provide greater levels of support and greater levels of attention to the needs of our students going forward. And so that is one of the things that we think should be built into this budget as we go forward, and rather than adopt a specific model, that we take the very best strategies from all models that are most appropriate for Montgomery County, and then move forward with that work in the FY '22 year.
Okay, were you finished, Dr. Daca? Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Asante.
No questions. I just want to thank everyone who testified and give a special shout out to Violet for her great testimony.
Thank you. Ms. Mandrowski.
Yeah, no, I'll just second that and thank everyone for the time that they took to get feedback and share their thoughts, but particularly, it's really nice to see our younger people stepping in and stepping up when there's a void that needs to be filled. So I very, very much appreciated and enjoyed hearing from Ms. Violet Fisher. So, but thank you, everybody. Thank you for everybody.
Ms. O'Neal.
No, I have no specific questions that, at this moment, I will hold them for when we have the work sessions as we dig through the budget.
Ms. Harris.
Nope, no questions. Thanks, everybody.
Ms. Evans.
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri.
Also want to thank everyone for putting together their testimony for tonight. I appreciated you all bringing up issues like how we're gonna address mental health, community schools, the staffing allocations, and how we will address learning loss, all things that we hope to dig in a little deeper during our budget work sessions in the coming weeks. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we'll move on. The next testimony is from Mr. Diego Uribeur. I always get Diego's last name. I'm sorry if I messed it up, Diego. And Byron Johns, they're representing the Black and Brown Coalition.
My name is Byron Johns.
And my name is Diego Uribeur.
We're here to testify on the Black and Brown Coalition regarding the 2122 MCPS operating budget. Emptying MCPS by its own data makes clear that Black, Brown, and low-income students, who according to the data have suffered the greatest loss of learning and opportunity over the pandemic. The data that's addressing of the students who have not engaged in virtual learning, 49% are Hispanic, 24% are African-American, 36% of ninth graders live in poverty, failed English in the first marking period, as compared to 6% for the year before. The average increase in percent of failing grades for Hispanic students in poverty is 24% and 15.5% for Black students living in poverty. In his address accompanying MCPS's proposed 22 operating budget, the superintendent calls out as a priority investing in combating learning loss and provides support to students who are struggling in virtual learning.
However, when we look at the budget, we see no reference of a dedicated amount of funding for recovery of learning loss. We urge the board and the superintendent to please be specific in allocating specific lines or lines for recovery of learning loss. We also think it is imperative, imperative, that when we think about recovery of learning loss, that effective teachers and effective leaders be teaching and leading recovery of learning loss efforts, particularly as it relates to African-American and Latino students. Why? Because these students are the ones who have suffered the most amount of loss. There are national studies that put the loss around 12 months or more. So we really urge you to combine the budget allocation to be specific about recovery of learning loss funding, but also make sure that we have effective teachers and effective leaders leading those recovery efforts. Last but not least, we urge the board and the superintendent to create a task force that will be in charge of planning and communicating MCPS's plan for recovery of learning loss, and to also develop accountability measures that should be shared with the community so that we can understand what is happening. This task force must have members who understand the lived experiences of Black and Brown students and families. It has to be a culturally competent effort. We cannot do recovery of learning loss well if we do not understand the barriers faced by those who need those efforts that recovery the most. Thank you very much, members of the board and Superintendent Jack Smith, for listening to our testimony.
Next, we'll have Lauren Raskin and Andrew Soyka, also with the Black and Brown Coalition.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Raskin, a youth representative of the Black and Brown Coalition for Educational Equity and Excellence, and I'm here today with Andrew Soyka. I speak before you in regards to the pressing issue that is the current state of our education system, specifically as it pertains to minority and low-income students. In our most difficult classes, it can be very hard to catch up when you fall behind. And we know that this problem extends to students who are not provided the same resources that we are. It goes without saying that the COVID-19 pandemic has ravaged marginalized communities, more so than their affluent counterparts. Statistically, we can see this in first marking period grades, with the performance of low-income Black and Latino students decreasing significantly as compared to pre-COVID performance.
Without strategic and direct intervention on the part of the board, these communities will continue to be academically set back. In the superintendent's statement, he pledged that this budget includes, quote, "support for struggling learners" and that it will, quote, "combat learning loss." We echo the Coalition's ask on recovery of learning loss and request that the superintendent and the board set aside dedicated funding to help the students who've suffered the most significant loss catch up. It has to be a number-one priority to invest in the supports needed to be sure students who have fallen behind don't just get left behind. In specifically allocating a portion of the budget to address these issues, the board can deepen their commitment to equity by investing resources in those students who were behind even before the pandemic because of the bias and racism prevalent in our education system. Here, you have the chance to rebuild a system that is long when broken. Use it wisely.
Okay, and the last speaker tonight is Sheila Craigie.
My name is Sheila Zaya Craigie. I'm the mother of an MCPS kindergartner and the wife of an MCPS teacher. When schools are safe to reopen for in-person learning, we expect they will both go back into the classroom. My testimony today is less specifically about my family, but rather my deep concern about how the current reopening plan will further exacerbate the inequalities in our community. Our classrooms should reopen when our public health officials tell us it is safe to do so, and keeping them closed comes at an educational and emotional cost. We all know the virtual environment can be a poor substitute for in-person learning, but there is a real risk of making this situation so much worse for the students who will continue virtual learning. I'm concerned that MCPS is designing a system that might improve the experience for those who chose in-person, which comes at the expense of the majority of students who stay 100% virtual. Last month's survey demographics showed these are disproportionately students of color, second language learners, farm students, and students at focus and Title I schools. The board has deferred the decision on how to navigate complex reopening logistics to principals and individual schools. The simple solution will be to set up a camera in the back of the room or have the teacher present from behind an open laptop. This will end up marginalizing, to an even greater degree, the most vulnerable students who disproportionately chose to remain virtual. The virtual learning students will be literally looking in on their predominantly whiter and wealthier classmates getting an in-person education. This is not the bargain I signed up for when we chose in-person. I do not want the benefits of in-person learning for my child to come at the cost of shutting out his virtual classmates. This is especially true at the elementary level. Teachers are not able to give equal attention to the online students and the students urgently present in front of them. How can the child confined to a muted little screen ever hope to get the same attention as the child in the room, calling out, squirming in their seat, or even having an emotional meltdown? The students who will remain 100% virtual, the majority of MCPS students and predominantly are most socioeconomically vulnerable, deserve a virtual classroom experience that is 100% tailored to them, both this year and in the foreseeable future. For the students that want to continue to remain virtual, MCPS should start a K-12 Academy of Virtual Learning that serves students across the county. That means planning and budgeting now for the 2122 school year so that families can register and MCPS can be ready to provide the highest quality virtual learning to all students who choose it. Our students deserve this attention. The board cannot leave this decision, so the more than 200 individual principals will be operating with little guidance or logistical support. It's simply impossible that this approach will lead to equitable outcomes. This is an opportunity for the board to take a leadership role in ensuring that all of our students have equitable access to a respectful education that meets their needs. Thank you.
Okay, we've come to the end of our testimony, and we're gonna take board questions now. Why don't I ask, does anybody have a question? Okay, well, seeing no hands, I want to thank everybody that submitted testimony tonight, and please join us on, let me make sure I've got the date right, at our next operating budget session, which is Tuesday, January the 19th. Thank you.